Good evening and thank you for attending and viewing the August 16th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Our first item this evening is a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded Ancestral lands of the Weot tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Weot language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past action by local, state, and federal governments remove the Weot and other indigenous peoples from their land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Weot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join for the flag salute. Anyway, we could have a history lesson on that, but will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Stillman.
All present.
If you wish to make a comment tonight during our meeting, during the two open public comment periods, or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you're here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting comment. If you're logged onto Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, or if you're on the phone, press *9 to raise your hand. When it's your turn, you'll be prompted to dial *6 to unmute your phone. For each item, we will take in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you want to make comment, please raise your hand online or line up at the podium. Our next item is ceremonial matters, and this evening we have a proclamation recognizing September 10th through 16th, 2023 as Suicide Prevention Week, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Thank you. Whereas suicide is a national and statewide public health problem, and suicide prevention is a national and statewide responsibility. And whereas, suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in the United States, the second leading cause of death among children ages 10 to 14, the third leading cause of death among children ages 15 to 24, and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 25 and 34. And whereas, it is estimated that in 2021, there were 1.7 suicide attempts. Over 48 -- it has to be wrong. Over 48,000 people died by suicide in the U.S. with 4,144 of those deaths occurring in California. And whereas, over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition was not recognized or treated. And whereas, organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide or who struggle. And we urge that we, number one, recognize suicide as a preventable national and state public health problem and declare suicide prevention to be a priority. Acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities. Address the disparity in access to mental health care for underserved and underrepresented groups, and advocate for ending these disparities. Fund new suicide research to support culturally informed and evidence-based mental health care and services. Encourage initiatives in Arcata based on the goals contained in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention and the 2023 California Suicide Prevention Plan. Promote awareness that there is no single cause for suicide and that the suicide most often occurs when stressors exceed the coping abilities of someone struggling with a mental health condition. Develop and implement strategies to improve and increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services and programs, and continue advocacy to ensure we can reimagine a comprehensive suicide, mental health, and substance use crisis response system that builds on the historic new 988 number for the suicide and crisis lifeline. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Arcata that hereby recognizes September 10th through 16th, 2023, as Suicide Prevention Week, and recognizes September 10th as World Suicide Prevention Day. And I do think there might be a typo in here, so if there is, we can redo that and get it back to you. And we do have Heather Freitas is here to accept, and she is the walk chair for Out of the Darkness. It's the Arcata Walk from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention.
Thank you, Arcata City Council, for adopting this proclamation recognizing September 10th through 16th, 2023, as Suicide Prevention Week. Thank you, everyone, for being here, although everyone's here for different reasons. I do want to invite everybody to the upcoming Arcata Out of the Darkness Community Walk. We've been hosting this in Arcata since 2015. It's going to be on Sunday, September 10th. On the Arcata Plaza, registration opens at 9:00 a.m. and our program begins at 10:00. It's actually on World Suicide Prevention Day this year, which is also the beginning of Suicide Prevention Week. So I have some flyers, if anybody would like some, including for the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, Karen can grab the flyers and pass them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item this evening is going to be early oral communications. The City Council values your comments, and this is a 15-minute time period to allow people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda, and at the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements and support requests that require council action. It will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers may be limited to two minutes, and there will also be time for public comment on specific agenda items, and then again, under item number 12. So make your way to the podium. We've got some seasoned veterans here. All right, go ahead.
Just to keep things moving along, greetings, everyone. My name's Joanne McGary. As many people well know, I come here all the time, and I sometimes like to talk about three things. The first thing I would like to suggest, having watched the Northern Unified School District Board meeting last night and making a public comment there about the school drop-off in front of Arcata High that's been concerning me for many years now because of the number of cars spewing fossil fuels on 16th Street to drop one child off. But at the beginning of their meeting, they actually allowed different members of the board to read the land acknowledgement, and it's nothing against the mayor here for her reading of that, but I thought that was kind of a nice egalitarian thing to consider. And that brings me to the concept of the written acknowledgement being posted here in City Hall, and I hope that will happen soon because I've suggested that a while back. So that's number one. Number two is we had a minor little shaker on Sunday, which was a little reminder, I think, for me and hopefully for many, many people, that we do live in earthquake country and we need to be prepared. We also have other issues that could crop up that we need to be prepared about, and I just, in walking around town, am concerned about how prepared our community really is when something serious happens in our community that we all need to respond to. So that was the second thing. And the third thing was, oh, I was just going to show you. I always carry my go-bag wherever I can possibly. It's really heavy today because it has a lot of books about climate change. And so that was the other issue I was going to talk about. As we well know, it's here and happening, and I sent you a beautiful article by Dan Rather that I hope you all got a chance to read. So let's be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Harden, and people call me Stevie. I'm a member of your unhoused population. This is my first time talking before anybody like this besides where I tell everybody I'm an alcoholic. So besides that, I have 11 years without drinking, and nothing has gotten easier. Everywhere I go, it is equally harder. I decided to go to a place where the climate didn't kill me in my van because it was just going to be as hard here as anywhere else. But there's a deep lack of empathy and kindness and compassion within regular, everyday people, and I see it right where I'm at on the corner because people think that I don't matter. So they will treat me how they think I need to be treated. And that is a community-wide thing on how people view other human beings who are only trying to survive because we're facing climate change. We've gone through a major pandemic where none of us have ever seen any of that before. The lack of compassion, the lack of places for people to get clean. Have you ever seen birds that get dirty? They get pecked to death by the other birds. If you don't have a place to get clean, people can tell it, and they will take it out on you. And I think that you could care more, and there's also an organization that could work more closely with you that I already know exists here called AHA, and they really want to do something about that, and I would like to see it, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Stevie.
I have a handout here. Good evening. I'm Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. What I've given you there is a budget for the expenditures on the Gateway Project, and what I've circled there is the expenditures for the 3D modeling. As we all know, 3D modeling is crucially important, especially at a time when we're evaluating form-based code. Without it, it's very difficult to establish a view of building en masse. With it, it's very easy. There's articles on ArcataOne.com about this. You'll see that the total budget there is $34,600 roughly. We spent $34,400. There's about $200 left. There's been very, very little evidence of any 3D modeling that we've seen so far. The visualization page in the draft is still blank. It's been over a year and a half. I think it's critical. Second, we have three study sessions approaching us, which I look forward to August 22nd and September 26th, October 24th. In the agenda packet, it says the purpose is, as a draft, excuse me, for your consideration, it says the purpose is to develop a final draft of each of the general plan elements, the Gateway Area Plan and the Form-Based Code by November 17th. That is one session of the planning commission after your last study session. It does not seem adequate. Lastly, it says it's provided a recommendation for council for adoption. It is not. It's a recommendation. The planning commission supplied a recommendation for your consideration, not for your adoption. It's a crucial thing. It's actually a legal element also. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, I saw one more card. Go out for in-person comment. You've already, we've already had, you are. It's four. We're here.
Hello to staff and council. I want to talk a little bit about the term L Street Interface Corridor. The term was coined in an interim period during 2010 to 2015, the rails to trails to define pathway interface with shared use roads. It starts with begin L Street Urban Interface Corridor is noted 11th Street and L Street pathway, end Urban Interface Corridor at 7th and L Street. The pathway presently only lacks a segment between 11th and 10th and is still a shared use road. I believe the term Urban Interface Corridor is still applicable today because greenways exist north of 11th Street and south of 7th. These greenways offer the greatest contribution to the L Street Linear Park and represent the greatest loss to community members of Arcata and the future Greatwood Trail travelers. I'd just like to say no enhancements will be achieved by trading these unspoiled spaces for more asphalt. Director Lawrie recently in a video Gateway Area Plan proposed circulation network changes and evaluated alternatives claimed a timestamp 323 Gateway Policy GA7I and no net loss will prevent trails from being moved. No net loss is a mitigation term that allows, in this case, to trade the L Street Class 1 trail for another Class 1 trail in another area. So it's, it kind of bogs my mind because it's completely backwards. And I'll just kind of end on that note. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any more in-person early oral communications? All right, let's check with online. Do we have anybody online waiting to comment?
We do. Our first one is Nicholas. Go ahead, Nicholas.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Oh, great. Hey, my name's Nicholas Tomjanovic. Thank you for having me. I'm new to the community here. I got stuck here for some medical care. I was injured up in Crescent City by a water machine, a Primo Glacier water machine in front of a Safeway. I sustained some serious injuries. I fell. I broke my back, my hand, needed a couple surgeries. So basically, what I'm here today for is a public safety concern regarding, you know, a pattern of gross negligence I've seen with this company in your community. It's outside a Safeway in Arcata, right there by the square. I found a machine in similar neglected, rusted, rotted condition to the one that electrocuted me. Since I've been electrocuted, I've contacted them. I'm in litigation and all that, and I've even found out they've electrocuted other people who ended up, they're dead now as a result. They're not really taking me seriously. The companies, the corporations, the managers, I've tried contacting everyone. They just say like alleged incident, alleged injury, kind of like disregarding that it actually happened in public. So basically, you know, I've contacted anyone I could contact, consumer safety, public water, you know, zoning, building, just OSHA, just the city manager even, and I found that no one really regulates these machines. The Department of Environmental Health goes inside Safeway, not outside Safeway. So I went as far as calling the police and said, hey, I'd like to disable the machine that electrocuted me. And they told me that I would go to jail for disabling a machine that had just electrocuted me, and no one could turn it off. Well, now I found a similar machine in front of Safeway, and I've contacted them. It's been two years since my injury, and I'm still in litigation, and they're still denying that this occurred allegedly, as they say. And they're not, I'm finding rusty machines in Brookings and Fortuna. I found--
Okay, so Nicholas, thank you. That is your two minutes, but thank you for sharing this, your experience with us. Okay, thank you, Nicholas. Do we have any other comments online?
We do. Our next call-in user, one, go ahead. Call-in user, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, good. Okay, this is Lisa Pelletier. I'm calling in to, well, basically to apologize to Mayor Schaefer and Councilmember Matthews for, well, actually, a headline that was written. I wrote a letter last week to the Mad River Union, and there was a headline that said, "Vote Schaefer and Matthews out of office," and that was not my intention. My intention was to let people know that they have options if the council is repeatedly not responsive to the community, that we have options, and that was my only intention. I did not specify anybody to be voted out of office. In fact, I admire the mayor, and I know Councilmember Matthews a little less, but I admire her for her commitment to people in our community who don't have a voice. And so, you know, I may even vote for them again. So to have people specified, when I did not specify people in that manner, really was disturbing. But it's, I guess it's my responsibility because I did kind of say that we can vote these people out. If they're not listening to us, we can vote them out. So, but I just meant to put that forward as an option, and it's not any shade on the people who are representing us right now. I don't know how they're going to vote. I don't judge people on just one vote. I'm judging them on, you know, a pattern of whether they listen to the community or not. So I apologize with all my heart, unreservedly, and I just wanted to let the community know that they do have more power. I have felt powerless in the past, and I just wanted people to feel they have more power than they think. So that's all. Thank you so much for your service, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Do we have any more online comments this evening?
No further comments.
All right. With that, we will move on from our first early oral communications period, and that takes us into the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items, and if discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate comment. Item A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of August 2, 2023. B, bi-weekly report on disbursements. C, approve the purchase of four hybrid Ford Mavericks, $117,585.72, including tax and freight, and award purchase contract to Harper Motors, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Approve an agreement and election for the city of Arcata to establish a California Employers' Pension Prefunding Trust Fund, CEPT, to pre-fund employer contributions to a defined benefit pension plan, and authorize the mayor or vice mayor to execute all applicable documents. Item E, adopt resolution number 234-04, establishing and approving an unclaimed funds policy and procedure. And item F, adopt resolution number 234-03, establishing and approving a pension funding policy. So are there any members of staff or council members that would like to remove an item from consent?
I'd like to remove item F, please.
Okay, item F. Yeah, item D. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And then, yeah, so if we have any members of the public that want to remove consent items, come up to the microphone so people at home can hear you. Okay, and so we are removing item D and item F, and then just hang by when we'll take comment on those. So any other items besides D and F that want to be removed? Is there's a different item, Jim? Okay. Yeah, well, which item do you want to remove?
Item A.
Item A. Okay. So do we have a motion then to approve items B, C, and E?
All moves for approval.
Okay.
All second.
Motion by Councilmember Stillman, second by Councilmember White for B, C, and E. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously. So that takes us to item A, and then Jim will have you come up and give your comment on A, and then we can discuss it.
I have pretty brief. My comments were left out from the minutes, and it was just to get briefly, let you know, is at 60 minutes on the timestamp, and it was just drawing the parallels between the great Redwood Trail in Yukaya Linear Park and some of the trajectory of the, trying to get our trail designated in their open spaces-- and some of the trajectory of the, trying to get our trail designated and their open spaces. And that's, that's pretty much it. And so just taking note that that was after and from there. And I consider it something important. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Bridgette, did you get that? Okay, so if folks then would like to approve the minutes as amended to include Jim's comments about the Great Redwood Trail and the connectivity.
I would move for approval with the correction for item A.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
She got it. So we had a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, thank you. Then, sorry, now I'm on the wrong page. That takes us now to item D, which, yes, go ahead Pat.
Yeah, so my name's Pat Carr and I'd like to thank the council for removing this item from the consent calendar and especially Councilmembers White and Stillman for their attention to this issue. I, I think I'm just going to make a comment. And that was my main interest in having it removed. I'm a, myself, a retired public employee. I receive a PERS pension myself. And I'm absolutely in support of the city ensuring that your vested employees receive a decent pension. Councilmember Stillman informed me that the Employers' Pension Prefunding Trust Fund is invested through CalPERS and that there are not any options for you to make that investment into a separate funding vehicle that lacks exposure to fossil fuels. Even though fossil fuels are the major driver of planet-killing climate change and I would add retirement-killing climate change. I would never argue that you make an irresponsible course of action that might jeopardize employee pensions. But at the same time, you'll remember that I talked a few weeks ago about SB 252, which would require that the two big state pension funds divest from fossil fuels. That bill has since been endorsed by the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and it's now a two-year bill in the state legislature. If you must establish this prefunding trust fund through CalPERS, I would ask that first you hold your noses while you do it and to reduce the stinky smell, proceed with that endorsement of SB 252. And tell Assemblyman Jim Wood, who remains on the fence about the bill, that you've made that endorsement. Then write a letter to the Assembly Committee on Public Employees in Retirement where the bill will next be heard in letting them know that. So please, I hope that you will agendize this, get it on for your next city council meeting and make that endorsement. This is a bill that gets potentially hundreds of millions of dollars of investments out of fossil fuels, could have a huge rippling effect across financial markets, reducing the incentives and certainly the positive look for fossil fuels as an investment route. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I didn't know Pat was going to be here, but I do everything he says. And Arcata needs to show the way of responsible investing for the future of our humanity and the planet. So please, please endorse the divestment of your CalPERS investments for the retirement fund and for the special fund. We need to just start talking out loud about the fossil fuel folly.
Okay, do any council members have any follow-up questions or comments? Or Tabitha, do you have anything to add on the topic? You don't have to, but.
Obviously, if you take action on, taking a stand on SB 252, that is separate from what we're asking you to do tonight. And certainly that is your prerogative. I, if I was going to make a personal decision, I probably would, I would, it would probably be in favor of it. I do have some concerns because it does impact the financial health of the city. And we, you know, you have to remember that we are now at a $31 million unfunded liability for our pension. And the biggest factor in that is the investment earnings that, that are made at CalPERS. And so every dollar that they miss their target of 6.8% earnings comes back and comes back to the city of Arcata. And ultimately that ends up being our taxpayers and, and the revenues that support us. And it takes away from other programs. And so I just want to be really cautious about making sure that we, we provide CalPERS with all of the tools that they have to try to maximize those investments. And I don't disagree with the position or anything else, but I just want us to be really cautious and thoughtful about how we, how you take that stand and, and what the implications could possibly be. Just as a side note, I, our actuarial reports that we get about this time of year in late July, early August, provide the most up-to-date information on our liabilities and our position. And they, they actually do a stress test where they show you what your liability would be if you, they calculate it on a 6.8% earning, then they calculate it on what would be 5.8%, which is actually what we received for the fiscal year 2223. And then if you do better at 7.8. And just the difference between that 1%, if it's 5.8 over the life or 6.8, adds $12 million to our unfunded liability. So even a small fraction change in their earnings could mean millions to us. And so I, like I said, I just want to make sure that we're well aware of sort of all sides of that equation.
I did have something.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I hear what Tabitha is saying and I guess divesting from fossil fuels was part of my platform. And I would hope that we could at least have a discussion, put it on a future agenda item in light that we declared a climate emergency in September of 2019. It feels like we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. And I felt like it is worthy of a conversation. I might got this number, get this number incorrect, but I believe there are 33 cities right now in California that have divested from fossil fuels. And so maybe we could look at what those portfolios are doing and maybe make some changes. And I personally do not know what are LAIF, if I got that acronym correct. What, I would like to know who we are investing in and, yeah, I'd like to know more.
Well, and I'll just add, because I think this is something that I've talked about with the city manager too, that I would, you know, yeah, I'm supportive of having a conversation about SB 252 and looking at how we could support that if that's something this council does want to support and have that, you know, discussion in session. So, yeah, thank you. Okay. Alex, go ahead, yeah.
What I was going to do is to move for the approval of this. And we can always add to the agenda for another time the discussion. Because I did see the Board of Supervisors do that, but I don't want to impair anything at this time.
Well, then, we'll, we'll take a motion on item D and then I think we saw enough head nodding up here that, you know, we'll talk about agenda setting in an upcoming agenda here, talking about SB 252 and how we can, as a council, have the discussion and support it and, or not support it.
Sounds perfect, as long as we get a second on that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second for item D to approve that. And then also, future agenda, keep that in your mind. All right, all in favor of item D? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. And then we pulled item F too. Was that a similar conversation or something separate on F?
Actually, it has to do with me not using my glasses, so I pulled the wrong one.
Okay. That's fine. They're all, they're kind of similar items about pension funding and all that fun stuff.
I would move for approval of F.
Okay, yeah, so no other questions. We have a motion for approval of F.
I'll second.
Okay, and a second from Vice Mayor Matthews. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now that takes us into the meet of our meeting here this evening. So we are going to be receiving a presentation from Dr. Wendy Ring of the Humboldt Coalition for Clean Energy regarding biomass and a possible, not this meeting because it didn't make it in the packet, but a resolution that they've brought forward that we can also take a look at in the future. So, thank you, Dr. Ring, for being here.
Thank you, thank you all so much for having me. This is an issue that I feel really strongly about. And I think most folks in Arcata will too, because this is the lowest hanging fruit for climate action in our county. We've been having a really hard time coming up with a, with a climate action plan that will deliver the emissions reductions that we need by 2030. And this is something that would make a huge dent in that. So I am speaking for 17 organizations who would like you to pass a resolution, which is somewhat just reiterating the one that was passed in 2019 for 100% clean and renewable energy by 2025. So, and, so we're talking about biomass. I'm going to give you kind of a whirlwind tour of the emissions and regulations and enforcement. And it's, it's a little complicated and anyone can have these slides after if you want, but we're just going to kind of respect your time and go through it. So biomass is 40% of RCEA's renewable portfolio. We spend $15 million a year on, on electricity that's generated down in Scotia at the Humboldt Sawmill Company. Can you, can you change slide for me? So, so every log that goes in there, about 50% ends up coming out as waste. So they get half of it as lumber and the rest is waste. Some of that is sold for landscaping as wood chips. Some of it is exported to, to paper mills in Asia and the rest of it is burned for electricity. And, and we think that this is not a good way to spend 15 million ratepayer dollars that are intended to support a clean energy transition. So reasoning being it's not cool for the climate, it's not clean for our air, it's not just for our most vulnerable community members, and it's just not necessary. So this is looking at the relative intensity of electricity from different sources. And you can see that biomass has, emits way more carbon out the smokestack than anything else because it is less energy dense. So that's the general picture. Let's look at our, our plant in particular. As, as power plants get older, particularly biomass plants and coal plants, they become less efficient, just like us. And, and so the Scotia biomass plant is 37 years old. And if you look at the heat rate, which is basically how much fuel you have to put in to get out a kilowatt hour of electricity, the efficiency of this plant has declined by 50%. And so what that means is if you have to put in 50% more wood, you get 50% more carbon dioxide out the smokestack and 50% more air pollution. Compare that to our other power plant, the Pacific Gas and Electric Humboldt Bay Generating Station. And even if you include the maximum estimates for upstream fugitive emissions, you know, starting at the well and all the way through the pipeline, it is a third as much. So, actually go back there for just a second. The plant in, there's another biomass plant in Anderson. And what people often say, if we say, oh, shut down the biomass plant, is, oh, they'll just truck it to Anderson and that would be more emissions. But that plant is actually younger and more efficient. And I've calculated what the emissions would be to put it in big trucks and drive it down there. And even if you do that, you still come out ahead. So everybody knows that wood burns a lot faster than it grows. And when you emit as much 300,000 metric tons a year of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere, it takes about 40 years for trees regrowing to get that out of the atmosphere. But it starts warming immediately. So you get, so you get 40 years of warming and when that's reabsorbed, that doesn't reverse the warming. We can't take the heat out of the oceans. We can't stop the permafrost from melting. We can't stop the sea level from rising. So it's not just a simple, oh, it's, it zeroes out in terms of carbon eventually. We have to look at what's going on right now. Which is pretty clear to everybody. We just passed the hottest month in recorded history. Go ahead. And, and we are approaching in the next decade, six serious global tipping points. So that's why time is really an essential factor here. And even though trees regrow and you could call biomass renewable, it makes no sense in the face of a climate crisis. So let's talk about pollution. There's two kinds to my way of thinking. There's the legal pollution and then there's the illegal pollution. Because the law allows biomass to emit as much pollution as coal. The Clean Air Act is the, is the federal law that regulates power plants and it is not health-based. Some people think as long as the plant obeys, you know, meets all the standards, that that means that it's not harmful to health, but that's not how it works. What they do is they take the cleanest 12% of each kind of power plant and they take the average of that and that is the emissions limit. And in the case of biomass, that means that it can be, it can emit as much as coal and be in compliance. So this is what comes out every year, 1,570 tons. The particulates are, are very, very small. And the ones that come out of biomass particularly, they're like nano-sized. And they go from the, from your lungs into your bloodstream and carry all the way through your, to all of your organs. And, and some of the toxins that we'll talk about later ride piggyback on those particles. So they also get distributed. So that's the primary particulates at top in red. And then the next four items come out of the smokestack as sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxide, et cetera. But then they also form particulates. So those are the secondary particulates. And, and I, I used a model, it's an online model that the EPA has to help policy members like, policymakers like you make decisions about, that are going to change emissions. And, and it monetizes the health impacts, basically. So I took those numbers that you just saw and I fed them into, into that model. And the result is three to seven million dollars of health damage every year from the legal pollution. So I saw that the EPA was tightening their standards for power plants and I wanted to see if our 37-year-old plant could meet those standards. So I had to do a little research and that required me to actually read the regulations and, and read all the documents from the air district. And what I discovered was that a lot of both state and federal laws for preventing pollution from power plants were not being enforced down in Scotia. So who does the enforcing is the, our, our Regional Air Quality Management District. The EPA doesn't come here. And CARB, the Air Resource Board, doesn't come here. All of the things are delegated to our local air district. So the district issues the permits, they monitor the emissions, they do the inspections, ensure compliance, and when that compliance doesn't happen, they issue notices of violation. So how do they, how do they measure what's coming out of the plant? There's two things. One is, once every one to three years, they actually suck some, some of the exhaust out of the smokestacks. There's three of them because there's three boilers. And it goes to a lab and they measure what's in it. But, you know, a lot could go wrong in between, you know, over a three-year period. So the other thing that they have is our continuous emission monitors. And the one that you're looking at is a diagram of a particulate monitor called an opacity monitor where they just shoot some light through it. And if there's a lot of particles, it scatters the light and so they get approximation. So this is the most important thing for protecting the community. Will Breger, who is a, was a former attorney for the EPA and for CARB, is someone that I called when I realized that some things were going wrong and I was like, what do I do? And, and he said, anybody can pass the stack test, the first test. Because it's scheduled, they take their cleanest, driest fuel, their most experienced personnel, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's easy to do that. So what's harder, and, and he's even seen, you know, plants with just egregious amounts of emission coming out who can pass their stack test. So, so the continuous monitor is the thing that's most important to us as a community. So when RCEA put out a request for bids, when they started our Community Choice Aggregation back in 2017, the Humboldt Redwood Company put in a bid and they, RCEA wanted to use environmental criteria. And Humboldt Redwood Company said that they only had one air quality violation. But it turns out. But it turns out that they were withholding 12 months of monitoring data that was supposed to be reported to the air district every month, and they, they were not, hadn't given it to them. And when the air district finally got a hold of it, you can switch this slide, there were, actually, this is just from one boiler, 407, there were over 700 violations of pollution limits. So, and I don't think, looking back at the minutes, that the RCEA board members knew that when the violations had been issued, but I don't think that anybody told the RCEA board members that that's what they were doing. Back one minute. The other thing that I found out was that those opacity monitors are, you know, they're only so good as they're accurate, and the people who are reading them know how to interpret them. And it turns out that the accuracy test that the federal government says that they were supposed to be doing had not been done for at least the six years that I went back. And when the, and even the results that were coming out, the staff at the air district were allowing twice as much, were applying an old outdated standard that allowed twice as much opacity and particulates as the EPA did. So what does that mean? Well, back in September, last September, they did that test where they pulled the smoke out of the smokestack, and they found that two out of those three boilers had emissions that were nearly double, and one was more than double and the other was less than double of what the EPA limit is. But those opacity monitors were running, and they should have shown that there was something wrong and nothing. So the previous test had been two years earlier, so this, this plant could have been putting out all of that extra pollution for two years, and no one would know. So there's another kind of pollution, other than particulates, that comes out of biomass plants. These are the air toxics, things like benzene, which is a carcinogen, and an endocrine disruptor, formaldehyde, which is an irritant to the airway, acroian, which is possible carcinogen and also is thought to be responsible for all of the lung damage from cigarette smoking except for cancer. Dioxins tremendously potent, and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which, which even pass like through the placenta and cause brain damage in developing fetuses, lowering their IQ, serious stuff. So California has a program called the Toxic Caspock Program, which is health-based, unlike the federal one, and it has four steps in it. One is that the plants have to, have to provide the air district with a toxic emissions inventory, how much did they emit of each toxic. And then the air district puts that into a computer model that the state has, and out comes this prioritization score, which is sort of the urgency for seeing if that's causing a health problem. And then if the score is high, then they do, they use another part of that model and assess the health risk to the community. And if it's high then, then they make the plant lower their emissions, and they tell the community. And if it's intermediate, then they just, you know, wash, rinse, and repeat every four years. So that's what's supposed to happen, but that's not what was happening. We've been stuck at step one for the last 20 years. So they did one of these health assessments back in the year 2000, and then they never did it again, and the prioritization score went up and up and up because, because the OIAHA, the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, added 37 more toxics that come out of biomass plants that needed to be considered, that the emissions themselves increased, which I can show you in the next slide. This is just benzene and formaldehyde emissions increasing. And then they also changed, the state also changed the sensitivity of the health hazard assessment because they realized that children were much more vulnerable. So the score in 2000 was 79, and in 2020, the last time we have one, is 5,999. And the air district and the biomass plant said, we don't need to do an assessment of health because we did it in 2000 and nothing has changed. So they finally, after a lot of pressure from me, are going to do a health reassessment, but instead of taking the emissions inventory that they had and just sticking it in the computer and doing it, the air district went to the plant and said, well, we'll let you come up with your own method for measuring your air toxics, and then maybe it won't be so high, and then maybe we won't have to do anything. And so the plant submitted a plan that even the air district couldn't accept. And that was, this all, that started in January, and we're at August, and we don't even have a plan for measuring this stuff. So this is really unjust. These emissions do not just stay in Scotia, by the way. They travel multi-state. I mean, you know what happens when there's a wildfire. You know how far these things go, right? So, but, but this is an elementary school, three blocks from the plant, and you can see, you know, in between the slide and the basketball hoop, there's a little puff of white smoke. That's the biomass plant there. It's pretty close. So 32% non-white, 74% economically disadvantaged. And then we've got, you know, the population of Humboldt County. The American Lung Association puts out something called the State of the Air every year, and they give us a report card. And they also calculate who are the vulnerable people and how many of them are, are there in every county. And so this is just a look at the vulnerable folks in Humboldt County, and they're, you know, the groups overlap, so you can't add them up, but you can see that it's a fair number of people. So this is really completely unnecessary from the point of view of the public. The PG&E plant could provide all of our electricity, all of our electrons. We do not need the biomass plant. When the biomass plant was shut down in 2015, the lights did not go off, and it emits far less pollution. So the blue is the biomass plants polluting emissions, and the red is the PG&E plant. And the biomass plant only produces a third as much electricity and 10 times more pollution. We don't need it. There are plenty of other things that we can do with mill waste. The very best from a climate perspective would be composting, because compost is net carbon negative if you include applying it to agricultural land, which we have lots of around here. It's proven at scale. There are facilities that compost as many tons as that plant is burning, and it's the lowest cost per ton of carbon dioxide removal that you can see. So in Humboldt, it's about four tons of CO2 equivalent per acre per year. And it also, because of the increased moisture holding and the better soil structure, it prevents, protects against drought and heavy rain, so it would be good for our farmers and our ranchers. Gasification is not, is different than combustion. It's done with less oxygen, and instead of just burning for energy, you get hydrogen, you get biochar, you get biofuels, and this emits much less pollution. It does emit about the same amount of greenhouse gas, but because it's displacing, its products are displacing dirtier energy instead of the situation we have now where we've got a dirty plant that's displacing cleaner energy, the net emissions are less. So there are six of these plants, the woody biomass to hydrogen plants under development in California, so this is a happening thing. There are plants in other states that are making jet fuel, gasoline, and chemicals that are going to be replacements for petrochemicals. There is a huge need for biomass moles for restoration after wildfires. Again, you know, there is a market for exporting the chips. There are other things that we could do, or that the plant could do with their waste. They don't have to burn it. So this is, these are the things that we hear a lot. Oh, it would just emit more to truck it to Anderson. Well, no, it wouldn't, because I ran those numbers. Oh, it's better than if the sawmill burns it or puts it in the landfill. Well, they're not allowed to do either. Those are both against the law. And then lastly, oh, we have to have it because it's protecting us from wildfire. Well, it's burning mill waste. It's not burning the results of fuel reduction from forests. It's burning mill waste. So in 2019, after Arcata passed its resolution, and Eureka, and other jurisdictions, Redwood Coast Energy Authority did also pass a resolution that we would have 100% clean energy by 2025. And then they went back on that promise and extended the biomass contract to 2031. Now, I've read the contract, and it has things in it that would allow RCEA to terminate that early. First of all, because they misrepresented themselves when they said that they were right with the law at the beginning, and then they've had 12 violations of the Clean Air Act since then, and I think 37 of the Clean Water Act. So, and that, and that's enough to qualify as a reason to get out of the contract. So that's what we would like from the city council. I know you have a representative who sits on the RCEA board, but we think it's important for the city council to take action because, you know, during the years that I've been following this, those folks, people change, and I think it's also hard when you get in there and the staff is saying, do one thing, and the board members are reluctant to do something to go against it. So I think we would like, you know, when a representative from Arcata goes in to take a vote on this at RCEA, we would like them to feel that they have the city behind them. So I have passed out, you've got the resolution. I'm hoping that next time it can end up in the packet and you could vote on it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Wendy. Yeah, and I'll just add maybe to partially defend some decisions RCEA has made, though, but just, you know, about that idea of going, you know, having that clean energy by 2025, that a big issue that RCEA has faced is the continued delay of the Sandrini Solar Project, which due to, you know, not being able to get solar panels that they could prove were not made with Uyghur child labor. Wow, yeah, we obviously want that, but it's obviously delayed this project continually. And, you know, you keep saying, okay, it's going to be online in 2023, 2024, 20, you know. And so I see that as a big reason, you know, that contract was extended because we're not able to get clean energy from another source that we were slated to. But, you know, again, thank you for bringing this up, and at our last RCEA meeting, we did kind of receive that preliminary report that was supposed to be, you know, as part of terms of the contract, that yearly we would see an update from Humboldt Sawmill about, you know, how it's going, basically, and what air quality violations exist, or what's being produced, et cetera. And so between the Community Advisory Committee on RCEA and the, a subset of that with that biomass technical advisory group, too, they are taking a little bit closer look and starting to, you know, pull some of these air quality reports and work, hopefully, because I feel like that's the direction we gave at the last meeting, to have that group dig into it a little bit more and look at these violations and, you know, make a recommendation, is this something that RCEA can keep doing, or do, you know, we need to relook at that contract and/or getting out of that contract? So it was a briefish discussion, because it wasn't an action item at our last meeting, it was just an update, but it's being talked about right now, and so this is an apt time, I think, for us as a council to see this presentation. So thanks, Wendy.
Well, and I think, I think a resolution would increase the interest of the staff in finding alternatives. I mean, that contract was extended before Sandrini, there were any issues with Sandrini or any of those things. I mean, I think we just have to say, if, you know, this is what we want to do, and as soon as other energy is available, then that's what you should do, not wait till 2031, and certainly not, not fail to say that it wouldn't even end in 2031. This is major, major climate and air pollution.
And just a question, and you might know the answer to this, or I see our environmental services director in the audience, but is the climate action plan, does that, are any of their goals, do they tackle biomass at that, at all in that, or?
No.
They're not touching that one?
Well, they don't because they have excluded stationary sources, so they don't.
I just wanted to ask you, when you were saying you could put it for, on pasture land and so forth, does it have to be ground up? Would it need a, because right now they're probably doing all the bark and it just goes in, but in order to use it on agricultural land?
Oh, well, we're talking about composting it first. So when it gets applied to the ag land, it's compost.
I missed that, thank you.
Yeah, and there's been a lot of research that's been done about that down on ranches down in Marin County, very successful.
So first, I wanted to thank you, Dr. Ring. I had the good fortune to hear this presentation twice, and it's really informative and educational. Where do I sign? One of the most striking things that I guess stood out to me was that this is the largest stationary source of air pollution, and of course, health damage, but that this plant, let's see, it says it emits nearly 300 tons of CO2 annually.
300,000.
Tons, thank you, sorry. Glasses, again, I'm going to blame it on the glasses. But that's 75% of Humboldt's passenger vehicles. What hits me personally is the injustice of how pollution, global warming affects the BIPOC, those who are socially, economically disadvantaged. And while my daughter isn't one of those students that live near, three blocks from the plant, I lived on the freeway for 20 years, and my daughter was recently diagnosed with supposedly exercise-induced asthma, but I'm convinced it's because we live by the freeway. And to add to that mix, of course, Caltrans is doing some work, they've removed 30 years of green screen, and so now our window screens and door screens are black from, soot from there. So I definitely, this is essential, that we do something about it now, not in 2031. And it's, yeah, it's unnecessary, and so, yeah, thank you so much for bringing this to everyone's attention.
Any other questions, yeah, from the council?
I do, and I'm not going to be able to phrase it very well, but hopefully you'll get to understand what I'm asking and can answer it. But we keep hearing about PG&E being at capacity for transmission and, you know, moratoriums on building in certain parts of the county. So does, would this affect, would this affect that negatively, or does it, is it, are we talking about two different things?
I don't think so, because my understanding is, is that it has to do with transmission and substations in the south part of the county. So I don't, but I'm not an expert on that.
I see Nancy shaking her head, too.
It's transmission lines.
Yeah, and from my understanding, yeah.
And also the availability of, I'm not too sure, but it takes a long time for you if you, if you have a building that you're ready for PG&E and you put it in saying that I would like it by August, for instance, they say, well, we don't have the capacity to deal with it until October. So we do have that happening, or it's, I'm not too sure where that comes from exactly, but it is people not being ready or able to, whatever it is, to hook up buildings when they're actually ready to be hooked up.
Any other questions from the council, or we'll take it out to public comment then? Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Ring, for your presentation, and we'll take it out to public comment now.
I thank you personally very much for this presentation, because you know the specifics. I just know how I feel about biomass. And the semantics that were talked about at a meeting I listened into at RCEA on a phone type of thing during the pandemic was the difference between renewable and clean. And I also want to share that in cocktail conversation with Matthew Marshall, who's the head of RCEA, he reiterated to me when I asked the question, yes, conservation, energy conservation is number one. So when we're looking at transitions and the timelines, there's a lot we can do to not use so much energy. And this all gets, you know, back to climate justice issues. One of the books in my backpack is by Jane Fonda, who's very much a climate justice advocate, and I was watching some of her webcasts on Fire Drill Fridays, and she has people representing the underserved and the people living close to these power plants in these industries that are the first line of being impacted by things. So I think this is one of the most important issues that we need to look at for our future. And it goes back to what I'm talking about for the high school kids and the school drop-offs. I mean, it's all about the pollution that our children are exposed to, and it's about the children, not so much about us older people. It's about what are we doing for our children? And so this is a really important issue, and I hope you look thoroughly at that resolution and discuss it at the next meeting, and hopefully we'll get biomass off the table in terms of our energy portfolio.
Thank you. I'll take our next speaker. I'll take our next speaker.
My name's Martha Walden. I'm a member of 350 Humboldt, and I've been working on biomass issues for about four years now. And I've learned a whole lot from Wendy. And I'd like to emphasize one of the points she made, which is that the problem goes well beyond Scotia. The problem is the idea itself that burning wood to make electricity can be good for the environment and even carbon neutral. So this concept, this misguided concept became official policy about 15 years ago and has even led in many areas to cutting down carbon sequestering trees in order to produce electricity that is carbon intensive, that emits carbon, and it's dirty also. So this business model, unfortunately, is really catching on. And climate scientists all over the world are very alarmed and climate activists are trying to overturn it. But it's an uphill battle because now they're vested interests that are, you know, protecting their bottom line. So it's a very, it's a very crucial problem for the climate. And it's also a dangerous situation right now here in the Western United States because the supply of biomass is increasing as we focus on reducing fuel loads in the forest. So it's a problem what to do with this stuff. And the easiest answer is to burn it and get a little electricity out of it. But in 2023, that's a recipe for disaster. We don't have time to reabsorb all that carbon, hitting the atmosphere like a bomb. So it is so critical that we promote other uses for woody debris, such as Wendy suggested. That includes composting and new and old technologies for manufacturing lumber products, liquid fuels, hydrogen, there's all these great ideas out there. But if you already have an old biomass plant that's functioning, you're not very, you know, you're not very motivated to pursue it. So we have to really talk to RCEA. Redwood Coast Energy Authority is trying to decarbonize the grid. And so they should use ratepayer dollars for more solar, wind, and geothermal instead of supporting an obsolete polluting biomass plant and calling it clean energy. So whatever their intentions may be, and I'm sure they're good, but that kind of greenwashing helps to perpetuate a dangerous status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else in person who would like to comment? All right, we'll move to online. Any comments online?
No online comments.
All right. Well, it'll take us back to us then. We don't have an action item on this this evening, but we do have a proposed resolution that we can push to another meeting. Or I might, I have a suggestion that maybe we refer this resolution to our energy committee if anybody is interested in that idea, just to kind of get some feedback from a few more of our in-house experts. And then we can take their recommendation or discuss their recommendation further if folks are interested in doing that.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Well, I think we need to do more than just that. We can send it to our energy committee. I will bring it up at the Air Resources Board. And also I think it's a good conversation for you to have once again as the representative for RCEA.
Precisely. Okay. Well, is that then direction that staff needs? We don't need to vote on that. You see some nods. We've got good consensus. Okay, well, thank you again, Dr. Ring, for bringing this to us this evening. And yes, as RCEA, we got air quality board up here. So a lot of people have heard this information or hopefully going to act on it. So thank you. Okay, at this point, that takes us back to oral and written communications. This will be our three-minute time for comment this evening. Know that pursuant to the Brown Act, council cannot discuss or take items that are not listed on the posted agenda. And at the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements, and supported statements will be set by the council for future agenda or referred to staff. If you are here in person, line up behind the podium, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand or press star nine if you're on the phone. And you will have three minutes. All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and one of the books I had in my go-bag was Ecotopia, which was a very inspiring book I read back in my college days at UC Davis in the 70s. But in re-reading it, or parts of it, and, you know, thinking about the future and talking about the children and the next generations, and my particular interest in the children of today and what they are thinking in terms of our town and the town that they are growing up in. I would just like to suggest if there is some means for, you know, when school starts back, oftentimes it's, you know, the time to say what you did on your summer vacation kind of concept to start things off. I would like the city to consider asking, especially the high school students, but even the younger students, to write a little something about what they want to see for their future in our town somehow as some sort of input of the students. Because they're not going to come to this meeting and talk about a lot of things, generally speaking. And I think we really need to hear from them as we're making a lot of decisions about the future that will affect them. So I don't know how it would come about, or maybe it could be worked through some local newspaper competition or contest or program. But I just do think that now's the time for us to broaden the discussion to the next generation so that as we're making decisions on the dais or in our own personal lives, we're remembering and thinking about the children. Because I think a lot of them that I've heard from are very upset with what's been happening to get us to where we are today. And so anyway, I just think it would be nice to reach out to them, to have, hear back from them of what they're thinking about their lives. So there you go.
Thank you. Oh, my mic was on.
Yes, good evening. I'm Fred Wise. When you have your study session on Tuesday, one of the first items is to talk about the framework for the meeting. The suggestion is to use the framework that's similar to what has been used by the planning commission over this last three or four months as part of their accelerated program of going through the general plan and the gateway plan. I don't feel that the framework is best suited for the study session, best suited for the council's purposes. It's set for details. In fact, as you know from your packet, there's a suggestion that you send in changes to the existing plan. My feeling is that what you're there for is a discussion with the planning commissioners, not so much about the facts, but about larger issues, the larger overall issues. The, so as examples of larger issues, we mentioned that there is a issue with the state density bonus laws versus the Gateway Plan's inclusionary zoning and community benefits program that, quote, "The design standards and community benefits programs are unlikely to be implemented." Rather, the developers will use the state density bonus laws. This is a big issue. Essentially would negate the last year and a half of work. Another issue, are we going to have another community open house similar to what we had a year and a half ago in January 22? Are we going to have any more conversations with the community about form-based code as we talked about in November when we had the accelerated $118,000 funding there? And the number of units that are planned for the Gateway Plan has been revised downward from 3,500 to 500. That's a major change. If there's only going to be 500 new residential units over the next 20 years, that changes the overall picture also. So again, these are not things that are changes to the existing general plan or Gateway Plan, but are large conceptual issues, which I don't feel that the framework is well suited for. Earlier I mentioned that it stated as we did not, that the, this is provided as a recommendation to the council for adoption. The planning commission went through this after further minutes for the July 11th meeting. There was a similar mistake and they corrected it. I'll bring this up in writing, so it's more understandable, but I advise you to change it also. As a very small item, as you know, the Transportation Safety Committee is the only committee that has a strong recommendation that's not in the draft plan now. The link on your packet to their recommendations is not operative. It should be, needs to be fixed by coincidence. Thanks.
Thank you. And just to address that, it is on the cert page and the link that I have has worked. So Karen can forward that working link to the rest of the council. Okay. All right, any other in-person? Okay, in Zoom, comments? Zoom comments?
No online comments.
All right. Well, then that will take us to our council and staff reports. Do we have any staff updates this evening?
Nope, no staff updates before closed session.
No staff updates? All right. See, last time we were confused about which side I was starting on last, so, but I think this side, we're going to start with Stacy. I think that's the way we're going to go. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's fine, thank you. So a couple of things, you probably have noticed that we're, the beginning of the Indianola Undercrossing has started, and so that's the construction that you're seeing on, in the 101 safety corridor there. So that will help to bring our, that portion of road to be much safer. And the other thing was I wanted to do, like send a thank you publicly to Walland Construction, some of their workers. I've been, I walked down there at the Marsh with a friend, and we've been down there a couple times. And there's places that you can't go, places you can, and then there's some shared space. And we've come across some workers, vehicles, situations in that shared space, and we're both really impressed how they handled that. Moving aside, very polite, giving us the right of way. It was just a good experience, and that doesn't always happen. So I wanted to say thank you. I think they're really trying to be accommodating to the public. And then, I don't know, did all of you get these? Okay, so I just wanted to share that we got some updates for the community ambassador programs, and it's pretty, pretty cool. So I wanted to read a few things. So some statistics that have been updated since the last time they were presenting. They have checked in with local businesses 1,780 times and had 872 conversations with business owners, also thanked 948 times by that community. They performed 425 wellness checks on Arcata residents and did some general check-ins with unhoused residents 4,345 times, had 1,954 conversations with those folks, and were thanked by that population over 1,000 times. They also checked in with housed residents 1,665 times, had 1,103 conversations, and were thanked 1,954 times. And so also picking up trash, I know we've all noticed the cleaner downtown picked up 3,455 five-gallon buckets of trash, including thousands of cigarette butts. And I know as I've kind of spoken with some of them as they're out and about, they have had people from other communities that have come to visit and really have been pointed out how beautiful the downtown is. So I just wanted to update everyone and thank those ambassadors. Sorry. One more thing. The Arcata Chamber is having a block party at the Food Works Building on Erickson Court, and they will have over 20 vendors, a Dutch raffle, beer, wine, and a DJ. And could I get the day and time for that? Do you know? Is it the Sunday? Okay, the Sunday? Okay, this Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00. So that actually sounds like a pretty cool event. So thank you.
All right. I finally have something to report out from HWMA. So at our last HWMA meeting, we got a really interesting presentation about a letter from the Little Hoover Commission. They are a commission that advises the state, and they have advised the state to pause SB 1383 in some of our rural areas. Whether or not that's something that the state is going to listen to is not known, but they definitely made some really good points about the difficulties that rural areas have been having about getting in line with SB 1383. So the ED, Eric Keller Heckman and myself, being the chair of the board, are going to draft a letter to send to the state, you know, picking out some of the points that we think that we can make a strong case for pausing. So thanks.
Right on. I got to attend a wonderful Zoom meeting. It's, that is the power of Zoom, for the Sister City Committee, where we were able to Zoom in folks from Nicaragua and hear updates from both of the organizations that the Sister City Committee partners with for the I Block Party, so where those funds go. And so, yeah, we heard a presentation from, her name was Jenna from El Provenia, which is mostly, and they do a lot of work with the Engineers Without Borders Group too. And so they focus on water and sanitation projects and habitat restoration and just clean water projects in general. And she presented about the latrine projects that they've been doing kind of in the rural outskirts part of Kimwapa and some of the hygiene education programs that they've been doing. And so that was really cool to hear about that. And then also, Ogar Luceros was the other group, which they've been around since like 2000 and have been partnering with us for a long time. And since, he gave the dates of since 2015 now to 2023, they've grown to start serving, they serve 345 children in the town with nutrition and family supports and just health education, and also just focusing generally on classes and opportunities for youth. And they've also recently started a program for helping teenage pregnant youth and young women. And so that has been like a really successful program of theirs that they're trying to expand. And they also operate a completely organic, sustainable farm that produces all the food that they use for their different children's programs. And so they're going to have a whole, many boards and pictures and presentations about that at the I Block Party. And so also the man that presented, he was just super excited because Arcata is one of the longest-standing partners that they've had supporting that organization. So it was really exciting to hear from them. I also got to practice my Spanish a little bit. And it was just a really fun meeting to be a part of. And then also just a reminder to support those projects and support the I Block Party that's coming up on Labor Day, Monday, September 4th, from 12:00 to 6:00, I want to say, ooh, gosh, I should know, because I am MC, I'm going to have to know what time to be there. But so if you want to just come out and enjoy some drinks and food and bid on the silent auction items, or they are also looking for volunteers, so if you are interested in volunteering, you could let me know, and I'll tell you, I'm trying to wrangle up some volunteers. So, yeah, that's my update. Thank you.
The ambassador program. I got an opportunity to witness a wonderful moment of compassion with an unhoused individual, one of our newer community ambassadors. I think she's newer because I haven't seen her before. So, yeah, it made my heart fill. Let's see, I had a great time at the Cal Poly Humboldt Move On Day on Sunday.
That was great.
Yeah. And it was, it brought a lot of fond memories for me because I was at the Jolly Giant Complex, and that's where I worked at the housing and dining services when I was an undergrad. Sunday, Kuna had a wonderful turnout at the Clean the Sidewalk event, and they came out in numbers from Arcata House Partnership, the Two Home Key supportive housing projects, the Grove and West Village Studios were present, and they got a little competitive. So this is going to be fun. Also, I was able to attend the homeless housing working group. That was today, and we got an update on safe parking. We're waiting on some status of some grants for them. The open-door medical van will no longer be in the downtown area, and services will now be in Valley West. We discussed about the influx of senior housing insecurity. Back on to the cleanups. Kuna will be hosting on September 3rd, another community cleanup. So if you're not doing anything, come on out to Valley West Park at 1304 Howland Drive from 9:00 to 11:00. And if you really want something else to do, we need some volunteers out there. We're going to be doing a Welcome to Valley West, Cal Poly. Cal Poly Humboldt, and also to honor the two new Home Key residents at both the West Village and Grove. We'll have another, our second annual free community barbecue. And so that'll be following. And I think that's all I've got. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to announce that the Friends of the Arcata Marsh, they have two openings for their board, and they're looking for volunteers for that position. And today, when I was cleaning out my washing, my milk bottle, it made me start to think about how we are into third-generation recycling. So back in the 70s, it was like the beginning. Everybody took their recycling to the recycling center. You made sure it was clean, it was perfect. It was everything you were supposed to do, crushed, whatever. And it was sort of a, you know, everybody, you run into your friends and you do it. Then from that, it became pickup at your house. And you had three bins or four bins, and you separated. And then that went away, and it became two bins that was separated in half. You put your cardboard on, your other recyclings in that. That got dumped into one truck somehow. And now we just put it all together. So I was thinking about how things are, how education, we may need to really do some more education around recycling. Because I know that people put things that are dirty into the recycling. They don't wash their cans. They don't wash their bottles out. They don't realize that they really need to do that. So that's why I'm saying third generation. I'm thinking about myself. I consider myself with the recycling center first generation because it started as an alternative for Wesley Chesbrough. So he didn't have to go to the Vietnam War. And because he did several projects like that that were alternative service. And so then my children grew up recycling, but now I'm down to grandchildren. So that's how I think about third generation. And they know what to do, but does everyone know what to do? And I really think that's something I would like to suggest that we somehow or other start thinking about how you actually recycle. Because we know if you have any grease on your cardboard, it's not recyclable. And so I'm just, anyway, that's my thing about third-generation recycling. Also, on the plaza, we continue to have music until September 10th, and that's on Sunday. And there's an art market that's there also. And I did set up for volunteering for the I Street Block Party from 10:00 to 12:00 for setup. And I just had to call and find out how many tables I'd have to move or what. And I found out, oh, I could do the, set up the desserts. That's perfect. I didn't really want to move tables and chairs and do all that heavy lifting. So, thank you.
Now that Alex has her just desserts, we can move on. Okay, that takes us to dates of future meetings. So we are going to confirm a study session this upcoming, next Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers for at least us Gateway folks. Are we confirmed? We feel good? Do you need us to, we don't vote on that. We just say, yes, we're confirmed. Okay. And then also confirming and setting two dates for your study session with the Planning Commission, Tuesday, September 26th and Tuesday, October 24th, both at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. So are those on the calendars for folks? Okay, confirmed.
These are, these are the same dates we've been talking.
Yes, yes. But now we're officially confirming them.
I've got them. All right.
Okay.
Could I just ask? I definitely want to weigh in with Alex on education with recycling. There are so many faux pas happening out there. People do not follow the rules. And, oh my gosh, I get so mad at my neighbors. Yeah. So, yeah, I concur.
Wonderful. Okay. So we're all going to learn how to recycle, and we're going to set our Planning Commission study session dates, and we feel good about those. And with that, we will adjourn into closed session for, yes, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, City Attorney.